We're waiting and we'll get this place ordered up. Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Kane.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
And Parker absent.
Special meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education at the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that this notice of this date, time, place of this special meeting was given at least twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours prior to this meeting to the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. It was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
I think before we get started on this, because it's obviously our most important thing we're here for, we need to acknowledge, we don't have to vote or anything, but it's with a heavy heart and that we accept Coach Parker's resignation. And he said, "I need to resign my position on the Alba Public School Board because of health reasons." And he says, "I've enjoyed serving and do appreciate your understanding at this time." So Coach P, as Larry Parker, he was one taught here at Alba for a long time. He was one of our football coaches and was our special, he was speech pathologist for our school district for a number of years.
Long, long, and then tenure.
Long time. He and his family both, he and Char both were lifelong educators at Alba Public Schools, as well as Northwestern played a big role in things at the university too. So we are going to miss him dearly, mostly his kind heart and the fact that he, you know, it's nice to have an educator on the board, someone that really gets it from the standpoint of the classroom. And so we will miss him dearly, but anyway, we do accept it and acknowledge it and we will move forward with our process, which means we advertise it in a sense, we'll be using our social media outlets to advertise that the position is open. We will accept applications in a sense and then we will interview those that have applied for the position and then we'll fill it. We have sixty days from today, is that correct, to fill the position. So we do accept it with a heavy heart and wish him the very best in his health journey. So we cannot not replace him, but we sure are gonna do a good job of finding somebody here to do it. Possible discussion regarding the board superintendent's search process. Stephanie, thank you for being here today. We've used your services in many things through the course of our journey here and we thank you for being here. We have voted to accept the basic search fee. We didn't know what else we will add to it as the time goes on. So let's start, I'm gonna turn it over to you as you visit with us about what are our next steps and what do we need to do from here.
Okay, very good. Well, again, first off, thank you all very much. We've always enjoyed working with you all as a board and worked with you all really closely during the strategic planning process. So, and I know you just kind of re-kicked that off again, so that's exciting time. So I think one of the things we need to think about is, you know, kind of where, when are your thoughts, we need to back end a little bit to the timeline of what your thoughts are and when you would like to have things wrapped up. I will say with us coming into the holiday seasons, it can make things a little bit wonky with the schedules. And so I'm gonna suggest, let's just talk a little bit more specifically about the process and some of the better, some of the details. And then once we have some of those things ironed out, then we can finalize what we think that timeline should look like and what that would look like. So one of the first things is, and I'm guessing Minutes Clerk, yes, that I'll be working really close with you and I actually talked to Dr. Argo on the way up and he said he would be happy to help in the capacity that would be helpful to us, but of course not cross that line of when it becomes inappropriate. And that is helpful on our end because we can use that, the connections there in that central office to help us collect all the marketing materials, you know, like kind of Chamber of Commerce type, you know, kind of your Chamber of Commerce speech, you know, your three bullet points, your marketing, your logos and things of that nature. So, and I've just got kind of a checklist basically of things that I'll get sent out to you all at, at the end of this, at the end of our conversation. So that will be the first thing. So one of the first things we'll do is just collect all of the information that we have and then our marketing and communication team will build you a customized search webpage off of our search website. We've done a really good job of everything on our website. I think that's just one of the, one of the things that gets the most clicks. We've done a really good job, I think, of kind of training people that are interested to come to the OSSVA website for positions, so we'll get a lot of traffic there. And then of course we'll advertise all through social media, we advertise through COSA, we'll hit regional areas up here very, very hard in some of your neighboring states. So that's kind of what we will use that information for to get all of that going. Additionally, with that base service price, we will open a community survey that will usually leave open just for a couple of weeks to collect your stakeholder feedback in regards to quality characteristics. It's a Likert scale, so it's a forced choice item, so kind of their top five attributes in several different areas are gonna come to the top. And then let's just a quick summary and feed that back to you. So that, that is a really nice thing for you all to look in regards to are the things I'm thinking about, that we're interested in, in line with what our community is saying. And I know that's something that you all have taken a lot of pride in, is really staying connected with the community. So I think that will be a good tool for you. And then we'll just make that decision on how long we're gonna leave that search period open. We have plenty of time right now. I think we could easily do a six-week kind of a traditional opening, but again, I think let's take a look at the calendar on what that, what we want to do with that. We do have an online application management system and each of you, basically what that does is I create a job profile. That link, the application link is embedded in all of the marketing and communications we send out on your behalf. And the applicants come into the system, fill out their information, you know, we're gonna ask for the basic information on the resume, a cover letter, their transcripts, just basic information along those lines. And once they click submit, it's held in their queue, so to speak, and then each of you will have access to that account. So as those come in, you can just jump in every two to three days and see if you have any new applicants. And we found that to be really helpful because you're not trying to look at everything at the last minute. You know, you can kind of process some things, go ahead and I'll, I'll provide you a rubric so that you can do some scoring as well. So basically your homework during the application period will be to review and rank those applications based on the things that you all have determined are gonna be important. And then of course, at the end of that time, your final assignment, so to speak, will be when we close the application period, I'll come back up and we will have another meeting and review those applications. But I will ask you to bring your three to five to the table. So we're not gonna be talking about this many, we'll talk about this many, right? So each of you will bring your three to five to the table, we'll work through a process to have some conversation about that and then make those come to a consensus on who you have an interest in moving forward to the interview process. We also will customize your interview questions, really again, based on the things that we learned about what are gonna be important for you all at the district. So you're gonna have an opportunity to just, you know, really kind of hone in on the things that are important to Alba during that interview process. And then we kind of handle the communication with the applicants during that point. So we will communicate with the applicants that you are not gonna interview and then thank them for applying. And then we will be in just constant communication with those in that first, you know, that first round, that applicant pool, that first candidate pool, and then help you have those conversations again from, you know, you have that first interview and you're gonna make that decision if you have five and you narrow it down to two, you know, you'll move those two forward and we'll help coordinate that process as well of making those notifications and then helping with the interview process itself. So that's kind of big broad overview of the things that you all agreed up here in the top. Is there any other questions you have about that? I wanna mention a couple of the additional services that you may or may not want to proceed with.
Where do, and I know that's an additional service, probably more of a background kind of checks, you know, where you do maybe a social media check, you know?
Yes.
Check OSS, OSBI check, kind of a check to see if we have anybody that's been in trouble or whatever.
Yes, yes.
Now that's, that's an extra fee.
It is, it is, because it's very, we use a, if, if, does anyone have any questions here?
Sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. I just wanna go ahead and go down.
I think, do we understand this still?
Good.
Okay. It's, it's a process and so it's, I mean, it's gonna be, I'll just say it's, it's a lot at the upfront.
Sure.
And then it's gonna be quiet and it's gonna be a lot at the end. It's just the, the way the activity will work. So the, the due, we call it the due diligence screening. We outsource that to a company called Baker U-Banks, which is what they specialize in, is executive screenings. And they have three different, kind of three different packages, so to speak. One is kind of your basic, you know, sex offender list, Department of Transportation, accreditation, you know, that their, that their certifications are accredited, and then it's a little bit more, you know, for each of them from there. It ranges depending on where you go from like nine to twelve hundred per applicant. And so ideally, what we will do is do it with the finalist. So you've got your group of your first round candidates and you narrow that to two to three that go into that second round and then that would be the group that you would want to do that on. So you don't have quite as much expense. The one thing to keep in mind is it will, it will extend that period if you want those results prior to that second interview, it'll be about a ten week. So it's like a two week break in between that first interview and the second, rather than being able to do it back to back. So what we'll do is we'll kind of hold dates, you know, for all of those things and that in the event that you decide you wanna do that. So we really can just kind of put a placeholder in there. Some districts, it's, it is really, really great information. And when I send you guys the packet of information, I'll send you some details on that. More districts are using it than they ever have before.
We have, I'll have to. We live in a society that is all the important.
Yeah. You just don't know. And sometimes it depends on whom, who's in your pool, you know? It may be someone that has been a long-term superintendent and has highly regarded across the state and that's not something that you have a concern about or, you know, it would have bubbled up by now versus someone that may be lesser known or you may take the position of, you know, it just doesn't matter how well we know them, we wanna do our due diligence and make sure that we're doing this right away.
Could we get a goal for requiring that for some and not for others? That's just a case by case.
It's pretty normal. Yeah, it's just, it's cost prohibitive, you know, to do it on your whole pool. It does not qualify as, it really just becomes your information. It does not qualify for what the State Department of Education asks for, but what this is, it's much, much deeper.
I know sort of, when we do some presidential searches on the region side, we do some personality type profiling, which shows if they're, you know, a candidate for, you know, just getting along with people, fundraising, their ability to, is, is that necessary on this level?
It, you know, I actually think it is and I will tell you that we have looked at a variety of different tools, platforms for that and have not settled on one. However, myself and two, two of my colleagues are going to the Gallup training, so we're gonna become Gallup Street Coaches, you're probably familiar with that as well. Probably won't have that under our belts by the time we're finished here.
There's some pretty strong Oklahoma-based.
There are, so I'm happy to talk with you about that, just see what that would look like. I have seen a lot of value in that. The other thing is, I know that I have some colleagues in other states that also have access to something, so that would be something that we could look at as well on if it's a tool that they found to be especially helpful in the superintendent, public education realm, you know, versus higher ed or in the business.
I'm surprised at how much it reached the surface, having done some and now see some people that we've employed for seven years, do we realize that something that we're talking is there actually is, is true. It's crazy for me to think that, to put that much stock in something like that, but it definitely is interesting.
It is, it is.
It's not a deal maker or a deal breaker. It's just a, when you've got people that maybe are really close, it may be a deciding factor.
Things like that can help us find the right fit for what we have and might be really good, but not the right fit versus, but be a better fit somewhere else or I'm a big fan of the personality.
It really would, it would just need to be a, you know, a piece and a small piece, you know, of the decision, the decision-making factor.
The top two or, you know, we can, I just don't know.
Well, I will, I'll tell you what Jane, why don't you kind of check on your end?
I, I can give you who we've used.
Do it.
She's out of Edmond, who we've used.
I'll do some research there and then I'll check with my colleagues and we can just see, we have some time.
I don't remember.
See if we can kind of pull together as options.
Really expensive.
I think, again, it's the same thing if you do it kind of towards your end, you know, whether or not you wanna do it on your first round folks or wait to do it for your second round, so.
I didn't see anything like that listed, but I.
No. We're working on it.
Well, it's not something we used to think a thing about, but people can interview and just knock you out of the park.
Or they'll get on paper.
And then not being real.
And that's a surprise. Yeah, you're right, you're right. So yeah, no, I think, I think that's a good thing, so I'll put that on my list that we can look for that.
I'll get you that information.
Okay.
Where you can get this if you're searching for stuff.
Absolutely, that'd be great. So again, I think, so we'll do some research on the personality type testing and see kind of where that might fit into the process for you all. We'll, I think we'll hold a couple of dates for the background screening if you all decide you want to do that to make sure that we're covered there on dates and are not scrambling. The other two things that you may be interested in additional services, the first would be, I'm not certain what order they're listed in. Yeah, the first one is the communication package, which is again, you hire, do you have your own PR person?
We've got a pretty good social media person right now.
Okay.
That really is getting things out there very timely.
That's great.
She seems to be good at creating things as well. But as far as any other type of things, you know.
Like press releases and things, not quite there.
Well, I don't know, but then we have good media coverage here locally that do any press releases. Winnie, Mary Ellen, what we needed to do on your end, she can get press releases out for us.
Right, right.
No problem, but what do you guys think? That's not a lot of money, but it's.
No, but let me, let me just explain to you what it would include so that we can have all the information. So again, it's hiring, it's hiring our communication team. It's Amber Fitzgerald. Do y'all know Amber?
I do.
She worked at Enid for a long, long time with Sean. So she's with us now. But she and her staff will help. The first thing they'll create is kind of your first release. So the first would be an announcement to your internal staff, announcing that you've hired OSSVA, the details of the search, when we're gonna close it, the link to the survey, you know, letting your staff know first, these are the things that are going on. And then it will also include a press release for the paper. The second piece, if you chose to do it, that we haven't talked about yet though, would be if you decide you want to host focus groups, need to come up and visit with your staff or your community members. She would help with the, getting the information out on that. And then the third piece is a reverse of that first one. So it's announcing the hire internally and then preparing communication to go out as a press release. So that's, that's, those are the pieces that are included in that package. And then really what we do is we create them. She would work with, so you know, the front end would be a quote with you about, you know, your hopes for the process and, you know, how you're looking forward to that. And then the final release would be another quote from you as the board president, as well as the person you hired, as a soft introduction to that, from that, to that person.
What's that cost?
Seven fifty.
Sorry, did you go up?
No, you're good. I did bring it.
I didn't bring it.
It's just, it's from last, it's from last time.
That's okay. I'm just like.
Seven fifty. And then the other piece that I mentioned is the focus groups and we can, we can kind of cobble this together however you want. It just is an opportunity to have face-to-face conversations, you know, like I'm having the conversations with you, I can have it with your teachers, your admin team, your other staff, if you wanna do parents or community members or business leaders. We just find a day, you schedule, schedule me as many as you can and then I'll just be around.
So tell me how a typical focus group thing would be, you would be the moderator possibly and there would be a series of, do you let them, do they have to present something to you first?
No, they, really, I just, I, it's the same for everyone because I really want everyone at the end of the day to have all the same information. So the first thing that we talk about is just our role, like OSSVA's role and how we are here to facilitate that. You are the decision makers, we're just gonna facilitate that process. So that's the first piece, talk about the process itself and what the timeline looks like. And then just collect their data. First, we're gonna wanna know that they've filled out the stakeholder survey. And then next will be just very open-ended questions about what I'm gonna talk with you all about here in a minute, are the strengths of the district, your growth areas, and just really the qualities and characteristics of the person that needs to be here.
So they're informational only? We don't give them an opportunity to ask us questions?
And usually, and actually frankly, usually for anything with the staff, I ask that the board not be there because I need to have that conversation with them.
Sure.
And then you may or may not show up for community meetings, some boards choose not to, and, or you can, it's whatever you wanna do.
That's your privilege. We've worked so hard on strategic planning and incorporating community and student involvement and the teachers involved. I mean, you've seen the listing of who's involved. I think it's pretty important to get everybody's input. I think we've, we've started that a lot and all of a sudden you put the dam up when it comes to hiring the head honcho that looks, may look, may be appear a little suspicious and we don't want that. We wanna be as open as possible because, I mean, these are our kids, these are our neighbors who are the instructors and these are, this is who we are. So I, I think focus groups are good. I've been part of them with City and Zo and I, I've appreciated the fact that they wanted to hear what we had to say, good or bad. I mean, it was always a positive.
Which you're looking for, what are you looking for?
Right, yeah, we're definitely looking for.
We're moving on, we're gonna talk about how terrible.
It looks like to me they're informational only, it's not, not up there to hear what we have to say.
No.
It's more of just.
Oh, no. Yeah, it's just, it's really just collecting their, it's just collecting the stakeholders' opinions about, again, just, you know, what do they really see are the strengths and what are some areas that, that can be improved upon and what's this person need to look like?
So who comes up with the list of the stakeholders? I mean, we know who the educators are.
You all do, yeah.
Okay, we come up with, I mean, how many are part of that?
So I think we have it.
That's a manageable number.
I think we have it four, for four, it'll be like my travel costs and it's like an additional twelve hundred dollars for me to be able to do four of them in a day. And then, but of course you can add to that if you want. And then we just would prorate, we just would prorate that out. But usually four groups are about sufficient.
So with the group of teachers, you just, you just pick seven people? I mean, the teachers?
I don't know, we wanna see everyone that can be there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that would be ideal. Like, do y'all have a common release time? It's close to a common release time?
Probably not, but it could be arranged. I was gonna say, even one of those early release days.
Yeah.
They've added on at the end, you know, I mean, they're kind of still supposed to be around working on Cory Killen or whatever the decision is for activity for that day. So I mean, to me, we're not asking to stay till five.
Right, right.
It's like, stay till whatever, all that time or, you know.
Right.
Do we need four? You know, I thought kind of student would be kind of, kind of different. See, when I wrote out community, to me if you put community, business leaders, that's the same, because we're a small, we're a small town. I mean, I think that's, usually get some of the same people there, so if you had teachers and admin, that's two groups, correct? And community business leaders is the third group, the fourth could be students. I think it's interesting, I have found through strategic planning, our most honest answers come from our students.
Absolutely. You wanna hear from them.
And they've shared some things that you think, I didn't really think that was a big deal and it is a big deal to them. And if it affects them, it's affecting their education, I mean, whatever it is.
It is, you're absolutely right, yeah.
And we've got some great kids that I think would be good.
I think that'd be good. I think probably I'd start with your.
I like that, it's part of the other.
And again, I don't know what your class schedule looks like, but definitely, I think your juniors and seniors definitely would be able to give some positive input, I'm not certain. Sophomores can be a little squirrely.
Sorry, sophomores, but I've had them and I understand.
And again, junior and senior, we're talking about a dozen, a dozen kids, six juniors, six seniors, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm. I think it's okay to open it up to an assembly type thing.
Yeah.
I think we can trust that. I, I, yeah, and I, I think, I think it's a support to them. I mean, our superintendents have always been very involved in schools and they, you know.
So the thing that we'll need to make sure of in the auditorium will be the media. So we would need Wi-Fi availability, of course, projection, because with that many students, well, with, really with any of the groups, I'll collect the data through an app called Mentimeter.
Sure.
We use it with strategic planning. So they'll need their phones or their devices to input their data.
What's the, what's the program called?
Mentimeter, M-E-N-T-I, meter. Yeah, it's really great. So it's like, you know, you, I ask the question, they start typing the answers and they start rolling up on the screen, which gives you an opportunity to just talk about them anonymously.
Plush releases, they come in, they, all of a sudden this one's taking the lead and it could be good for us to do overall. Eval what we're doing. And I think, I'd answer your question about the validity of the auditorium, that'd be a Nick Brock question. I think we should have good, I think it'll all be on their Chromebooks. Yes, I think so too. I mean, I, I would, I'd think it would be, but that's a.
No, and I think, I mean, I really do think that if you can get, like I said, it really will just, we'll just need to kind of look at your calendar.
I've looked at one of those early release days, November eighth is the first one, that's pretty quick.
Yeah, that's too quick.
The next one's not until February fifteenth, which is too late.
Yeah, I don't think that'll work.
The early release.
So really, I mean, and ideally.
Well, I don't know if the students will ever be disappointed if they're released early from class and we ask the teachers to stick around one day. I just, I, I'll have Kleenex in case there's upset, I'll go counsel them.
So I think really it'll be the hardest thing, getting to this time of year is avoiding game night.
I know.
Like you're gonna have Tuesday, Tuesday and Fridays and you guys are still playing foot, well, Tuesday and Friday for basketball, you're still in football right now. And then has wrestling, wrestling ways.
They're gonna be wrestling.
So we're still Tuesday and Fridays are the days we need to avoid mostly. Okay, so we, and how many groups are you thinking? What were the ones that you?
Well, I, I said teachers, admin, community slash business leaders and students, those are the four that I think of, but.
What do you guys think?
I have wonderful input, so.
Is there a group we're leaving out?
Just do, just do the full group, like entire community would include your businesses, your parents, everyone involved in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so really with this, let's see, this schedule, we could do, like probably, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but just kind of think about this, we would do like the admin, like maybe early, like early, early afternoon or like right after lunch and then get the students in before school's dismissed, get the time right for the, afterwards for the teachers, and then an early evening for everyone else. The other option, if you wanted to add a fifth one, and I don't know your community, is you could do, you could start with a luncheon, like a business luncheon. If you had like a bond advisory team or a, you know, like if you had.
We ask our strategic planning.
And if you brought them in for like lunch.
Just get some pizzas or whatever, ask them to come. I think we could treat them rather special, mostly admin there.
That would be good, because would that knock out the admin meeting?
Yes.
Because they're all on goal areas.
Remember, I mean, we, we've got some, we've got a foundation of people. I used to come in for two days and sit in and going through that process, which they would, I mean.
They represent, they should represent our teachers.
They seem to be a good representation of.
They can still go online and do the survey.
Another group or which other group are you talking about?
Oh, no, the same thing. I mean, as far as, as you have the strategic planning, community members that are part of that as well. But admin is always, I don't know, do admin be better served to be by themselves to not feel like they?
They may want a more private conversation.
I don't know, I mean.
I think maybe just, let's think about it. I, well, I think, I love this idea of bringing in your committee. I think that's brilliant.
I do too. I think that brings a little off section. If we don't, we'll get a good turnout for that.
I think so.
We've got students. It's a good cross-section of who we already respect and have faith and confidence and want to tell us.
For sure. And it's like you said, it fits exactly into your goals and objectives of just continuing to keep everybody involved and have some shared decision-making. And this is shared leadership. I mean, you all are demonstrating that.
The rest of these, we would not leave out those that, that maybe aren't a part of that group, but still have something that they could be included as well. But I do think, figure out, noon, I mean, everybody's got a noon now.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. So I would think, I would still encourage your other, I'd encourage everyone that's on that strategic planning team to come, but then I would also still open their individual sessions. So I'd still have an admin session.
Yep.
Your teacher, your students, and then the community. So essentially you'll have five.
I was thinking we'd have one when I first started. One, that'd be all we need.
It's, it's a lot of data. I mean, you know. Well, I'll tell you what's really nice for you all in this community is they're trusting you. I mean, because of going through the strategic planning process and they've seen, they're realizing some of the things that you all have done, they're like, oh wow, they really want to hear. And so I think when you invite and open these things up, I think you're just going to continue to gain momentum.
It reinforces that.
Wanting to participate and, and knowing that you care enough to follow through. I think you're starting to really prove that and gain traction with that.
I think we have, like any community or any, we have two, really two distinct groups. You've got that group that's always supportive and always understanding and they're, and then we've got the group that, that is not, wants things to change. They feel like they, they see change and they want change. So, and that's, I think, with our community, with our nation, with everything. We have those two types of, of groups and I'm glad we give them all, all the voice, that'd be good.
Absolutely, no, I think that's great. So I think then the next thing will really just be the challenge and frankly, a lot of this is going to depend on my schedule. So.
You just drop everything on us.
You're the only district I'm working with. I know, we are.
She's a stuck in her, she's not on.
I know. Gosh, she's, she's an Isabel, what's she doing down there? She's our girl.
We'll re-respond.
Yeah, so I will, I really will just need to look at my calendar and then just give you some dates that we could do that, that we just need to block off. So I'll send you some, then I'll just block several and then you can get with your team.
Career tech too?
Oh, I'm sure you can.
Oh, hosted out there?
Yeah, your strategic plan for sure seems to work out really well out there.
The.
Students are doing the auditorium. It'd be better if they're there because then they can just, they don't have to be transported.
But maybe it'd help you to be all in one same, the same location, but if you're doing a luncheon, they may want to do.
No.
Well, they're, they're radio, I mean, they've got a screen, like you said, you're needing lots of different things.
Right.
That they.
But I'm sure one service tech would be more than happy to be as service as they can be.
The, the one I, I mean, students of course will be on campus, admin will be on campus, teachers after school, I would still encourage to be here. I would, just because I don't know if they'll drive.
Be on campus, you mean?
Like have it here rather than ask, asking them to drive out to Gordon Cooper after school.
Correct, no, it's a.
That's on that.
Could they still do the auditorium? Could you still have your staff with everyone?
That's up to you on whether or not you think they'll do it.
Have to be.
I'm just thinking, if I were a teacher and I had an optional meeting across town.
Well, and you know.
An area might become really important.
But they're. But they're, the traffic is that heavy and really truly, this is their opportunity.
It is.
To show up. I mean, again, I mean, you can lead a horse to water when I choose to not drink. And then when I sit back and play them, go, I don't ever see you there.
I agree.
Mr. Hanson.
I agree.
But, but, and they really, we've got fabulous teachers and they will be, and again, I could talk for 44, I would be thrilled. I've never, I don't know if I've ever been asked, my opinion in 44 years, who my super kid is going to be. So I think they'll be flattered that we're asking.
Okay, then I'll let you guys set the venue then. Okay, so I'll send you dates and then you can get everything else figured out. Cool.
So.
Okay.
Timeline?
Timeline is, do you guys have your, do you have a hard calendar out? I know, I actually worked on this, I actually worked on this today and the. So I was looking at opening, like if we could open, again, we're just talking out loud here, if we could open November 6th, let's count weeks.
So if we, if we decided to do your communication package, which they help you get stuff ready, that would make sure we're ready by the 6th, okay? Because I, do you guys think that's kind of, would be a good thing at 7:50 for their communication package?
Yeah, so if you can, and it would be close, like I have emerging, Tim was in our, was our very first emerging leader class. Do you remember that? So our next, our sixth class begins tomorrow. I know, which is pretty exciting. I know. The reason I'm saying that is I may not get you the list until Thursday. So if we get, but if just if we shot for the week of the 6th, let's just say we'll shoot for the week of the 6th. Then it would be December, let me look and make sure, help me count my weeks. Week of the 4th, week 5th. The sixth week would be December 22nd. When are, when are you all out of school?
Our last, yeah, our first day of breaks, December 18th.
December 18th. I, I would actually, I would leave it open. I would leave it open through that because I think that there will be a lot of people that are taking that week off that may want, this would give them a chance to drive up here and take a look. It would give them a chance to put any final touches they wanted to put on.
On the application.
And then close it on the 22nd and then that gives you all.
On December 22nd? You don't think keeping it open till the 29th is a good idea?
It could, I mean, it's not, it's just.
It's just dead time for us.
It is, it is.
I was going to say there's not.
And it would be.
And that would, that'd give us a little bit more time actually to get it, to get it right.
I think the 29th, that way they have Christmas holiday that week. Because that's something that they want to be able to, I mean, it's like a week that's dead anyway.
It is, perfect. Okay, and then what happens from there is, when do you come back?
Teachers report back on January 4th.
Students report back January 4th.
Teachers come back to January 2nd and 3rd for in-service.
Right. All right, so, so this is where things will get really busy. So after we close it, we're going to need three to four special meetings. We'll need one special meeting to review applications. And that will be an executive session, I'll send the language for that. And then usually, and these are usually back-to-back. So it's like a, a week that we do the application review and I can contact applicants. The next week is round two. And then either the next week would be the due diligence screening or round two.
What's our January board meeting?
I thought it must be the 8th.
We haven't established it yet. We will let this come before meeting.
The review meeting will take about, it's like an hour and a half. You probably don't, you don't want to tag that on.
That first week of January, the only day I have is the 3rd. That's a Wednesday. Are we really adamant about staying off a Wednesday? Because the 4th starts week capital. The second, we're at Blackwell High School game.
What about, what about the week of the 15th?
Of January.
Does that, does that feel like it's up too late? Because otherwise it's going to be the week of the 8th.
So start our first meeting?
To, yeah, to do the application review.
Because you said that one's a long meeting, that's a long.
About an hour and a half. Well, we will not, we won't have a board meeting January 1st, so you know, and it's going to be the 8th of January, it's going to be our January 12th meeting, I mean, yes.
How, you're looking at your calendar, it's a mess, isn't it?
Yeah. Are you, can you guys give us an hour and a half at lunch?
I can.
Have you, Kevin?
Daytime meetings are ideal.
Probably.
But you tell us, the rest of us, I mean, I can come, maybe I'm.
Today.
I could, that week of the 8th through the 12th, I could do any noon that you guys are, are open to.
Monday, Monday will be the 8th.
I'm working at night.
I know. But Monday day, I'm at SkyTug and then I have another meeting. And then, but I'm, we'll really open the week of January 15th during the day.
Okay, well, so you're saying Monday, that the 8th through the 12th is really not good for you?
Yeah, for her, except the 8th. The only day she could be here is.
You could be here the 8th?
At noon, yeah. That's a long day for you all because that's, that'll be your board meeting that night. Does that?
Does that, you guys want to push it to the 15th? Well, we got to get board member interviews in here too.
That's right.
I think.
The 15th is an okay day.
We all be close. So if you, if you could fit it in, I mean, I'm sitting here looking, kind of just looking at my, at my schedule is, if we do, again, on noon, I could do it, I could do a noon on Friday the 12th or I can do a noon on Monday the 8th. And then that would let us hold that first round of interviews the week of the 15th.
I can do the 12th at noon.
I can too.
It's Friday, Chisenham Hall.
Can you do that? Friday the 12th? Okay. And I will send you guys a calendar. Friday, golly, we're already talking about January.
Gobble gobble, Merry Christmas, let's go.
And the rest of the 8th weekend.
Okay, and then, yeah, I, I actually will need to give them on my calendar, you all. I would rather do it while we're sitting here if you can.
Sure.
Okay, so if we do that on the 12th, then I'm going to need the 15th to make calls. And so here's, here's the next big question for interviews. Can you, can you facilitate those and hold those interviews during the day? And if not, we've got to be really conscious about how many, you're going to have to hold several evenings because I mean, each one of your interviews is going to be at least an hour. And then you've got like a 15-minute kind of switch to get one of the candidates out, to get the next candidate in. And so.
I just can't the 18th, 19th, 20th, the kids are in busk. High school kids are in busk, 18th, 19th, 20th. I, I really want, don't want to do it those, if you guys don't care.
So we could do the 16th or 17th. But again, it depends on, are we looking at multiple evenings or one full day?
The 16th is a, I'm open the 17th, but again, you guys, if Wednesdays are bad, I'm open the 16th or 17th.
If it's far enough out, I can work around.
As you say, I, I have school visits, but if I call and say, can I book my day, they'll go.
Which one, Tuesday or Wednesday?
It won't matter. I think either one of those will work.
Let's go with Wednesday because it'll be later, late enough for me to have a little leeway if I don't get them called till Monday. I'll try and get them called Friday.
There would be a new meeting as well?
Well, these are interviews.
Right, so.
It's, you need to hold the whole day.
All day, okay.
And school will be in session, so this is another venue question.
We could do it down here.
At this building?
Right here.
That, it's okay with me if you guys are comfortable with that.
It, it's really, I don't want you bringing them in the back door.
It's with the last time.
Okay, let's, and we'll review that and think about that, confirm that later.
There'll be a sneaky reporter up here, Mary.
Round one is January 17th. And just hold all day and again, I'll send you guys calendars. And then we should hold, we should hold a day, the week of the 22nd and a day, the week of the 29th so that you can make a decision about your due diligence screening.
I'm open the 24th and I'm open the 29th. I'm, readings are needed for 26, 25th and 26th, so that's not good.
What does the 22nd look like?
It's our boys are a fair view for.
That night, it'd be, it'd be another day, it'd be during the day.
I could do the day of the 22nd. Is this, is this crashing, that's a lot of full days for you.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I'm sensitive to that, all of you that are, are glad for not, you know.
We can probably make it work.
She wants to do, I'm holding up, do whatever I want to do.
I'm blessed.
For her. I mean, I'm blessed because it's a major baseball, it's a win-win for my kids.
We'll let you drive that because I know you're.
You're the one that we're taking away from.
No, typically it's pretty slow that time. I mean, we do have audit starting January 2nd, usually by.
Gosh, Mr. Goon, on by the 22nd?
10 days, they're usually content enough, they're out of here.
Right.
Hopefully. So I, I, I think we can, I think I can make that work.
You want to shoot for the 22nd?
So we might as well.
Okay.
Kevin, if you visit with your bosses, if they say, oh no, you're not, just say, oh no, I, I can't.
Yeah.
So that's round one, round two, that ought to be enough.
Those are both interview days, correct?
Yes, those would be interview days and we're not going to use all of them, but we really need to hold one that next week in case you do the due diligence, so the week of the 29th.
I'm open the 29th, I don't have anything on the 29th.
And I, I will tell you, I am at the Gallup training. So I, that's someone else from our staff can be available to help. So we, I just need one more day. That week.
I'll be gone on that Wednesday. 31st or 33rd?
You want to go February 1st on Thursday? Does that matter to anybody? Does that help anybody?
February 1st.
And then when will your, when will your board meeting be?
Typically it would probably be January 5th. I mean, February 5th.
That would give us.
Almost could hire, but I don't know that you'd have it worked out. Have to do another special meeting. That'd be okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, let's hold February 1st.
Okay, let me, let me put these down. January 12th.
Excuse me.
January at noon, January the 17th. At noon, January at noon, January the seventeenth.
All day.
Noon, all day, January the twenty-second, all day.
Here at the central office, both those second.
And February first to be announced, because we won't need all day.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
We didn't assign on a date to do the, I'm gonna send you the dates for these.
Okay.
I thought this hurts. Okay? All right, this helps, really, I know that's a little stressful to get it off, it needs to be on the calendar.
But it helps us too, because all I, I mean, all I need to do is just let my, my folks know that I'm helping.
Right.
And make, move my schools that I go to.
Perfect.
It's not, they're very, they're just so happy to see me, Stephanie, they just, we just, they just, you just come when you want to, Ms. Kane, I said, don't come.
You just bring sunshine, rainbows everywhere you go.
Cameras on, be careful.
I said that?
It was a great team, that's what these, if those did that.
Yeah. Twelfth might, just the noon, the twelfth would probably be fun, like I said, hopefully, they're out of there by then.
All right, well, we'll, we'll work on it, and like I said, we'll, we need to make it work with your schedules and not put anybody in a bind, so let's absolutely let us know.
So please let us know.
Oh, I will, I'll, I'll actually get on that, hopefully tomorrow, and just see, normally, a week to ten days, they're.
They've had to fill with each other.
Where are you?
Farmers co-op.
Okay. All right, busy time. I know, absolutely. All right, and we've talked about a lot of things, so let's talk to me, just give me thirty seconds, just shout a couple of things out on what you think the biggest strengths are of Alba Public Schools. Biggest strengths.
Financial strength.
Okay. What else?
I have a, I think they have a, they have good support staff, meaning whether it be the office, we're extremely strong, the group has worked a long time. However you say that, that's, that's a real plus. The other thing is all of our principals are really good people and tact.
Okay.
I agree, that's excellent educators. Very dedicated.
Great opportunities, academic opportunities with the university career tech and.
Great partnership.
Part of it. Really good, probably healthiest in the state to be quite honest with you with the.
Okay.
Per capita.
Yeah, I mean, as far as what we.
For what you're able to have together.
And we have to use each other, which is, it's always been that way, and it continues to be, that's a very strong relationship, so that's really great. But we're very fortunate.
Okay.
I think our extracurricular role are very strong as well. Award-winning extracurricular programs.
Okay.
With the audits and audits as well. Well-rounded extracurricular, I, I think that'd be a good way to say it, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
It's speech. Very well-rounded.
Okay, that's good, so it's, you feel like it's equitable, just in regard to students and investments and things going into that?
Tremendously heavy, I don't think in one area, really.
Okay, good.
Our students can be involved in just all of the, there's so many things, there's, there's a lot of activities for them to do.
Which takes a lot of cooperation, teachers allowing them to be going all day today to acquire contests, you know, I mean, there were, there's a dozen of them that were contesting. It's, it's just a busy time of year, but, but everybody understands what everybody else brings to the table, so, you know, I'll let your students go, you know, it's not turn, be sure, turn the favor, you know, don't penalize them, and so they, they seem to. And the kids do a lot, we've got a couple of kids I know that serve on statewide committees, and are, you know, SEC LA officers and law committees. That's what I mean, they're, and that's, you know, as you well know.
Right, like you want them to be, but at the same time, it's hard to be out of the classroom, it's got to be.
Six hours just to travel, you know, for them to go to a meeting, so.
That's good, and for your teachers and admin to work on it, because that's.
Again, it's, nobody's ever thrilled, because we'd like to think, if you, you know, I said to the kids, when you miss my class, I like to think you missed something.
Right, right.
So we're gonna do it double tomorrow. And then you can look them back, and they're ready, I mean, they just understand, you just have to stay up on that stuff. They're not penalized for being in a lot of different activities, it just, they're, they're able to participate in that.
Good.
We have a very competitive salary package, we do. I think our salaries are gonna be competitive.
Okay.
The region, maybe in the state, so.
Okay.
They, we post salary ranges for IRE, we, we don't post salary ranges to common end. So there'll be no posting of the salary, so using that, just words, maybe show that we're definitely competitive in.
And I will actually provide you with a comparable.
Yeah.
Of like-sized districts across the state.
Yeah.
So you'll have an idea of where that is.
We have good class size ratios, and we have really good special education opportunities.
Okay.
For students with disabilities and exceptionalities.
Okay. Good, awesome. What about some growth areas? There's some areas you're, that you're working on that you know about, and you're not working on yet, but you know about.
I think, you know, we're right there on the risk of looking at some long capital improvement.
Okay.
Type.
Okay.
Opportunities.
Okay.
We've got our, we've got a robust strategic plan in place. Just they need to know that we're in the middle of that, and it's.
It's nice to continue.
They're not gonna have to come in here and do, go from round zero.
They're expected to pick it up and continue with it.
Yes.
I mean, that's, it's just, it's, just stop on that, that's, it gets like the focus groups, you're doing more damage than good.
We do have some capital issues. Capital improvement issues, so we're.
Older buildings.
Okay.
We need someone that's kind of an expert in those areas.
Okay.
Understands how to create a bond and build past.
Okay.
In the event we need to go that direction. You know, the other thing we have, we have a really strong foundation. And we've got some nice endowments that support our educational programs for teachers' grants.
Your, is it your education foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
You should talk about it, it's a, it's a, it's a well-oiled machine, it's been around a while, so it's not like they'd have to come in here and start a foundation.
Okay.
We've got one.
Excellent.
And they're very active, I mean, they've got a, they do a lot.
Wonderful, very giving community.
We do have a very giving community.
Anthropic.
They will support, try anything that the kids are involved in. I always laugh, Stephanie's out taught Miss Pena thirty-seven years, and I've been told no. But if I, because for the kids, they might look at me like, Karen.
They're three with advice too.
They get a lot of advice.
Do they?
But they're very giving with kids, and they, and I, you know, if our kids are, they can back up and support while they wanna go do something, this community seems to always make it happen, somebody.
Right.
We just all show up and make it happen, so.
So you guys, I mean, you're looking for someone that can, that has the ability to continue your financial position.
Yes.
To be able to maintain and continue and make that stronger, to really pick up and own your current strategic plan and get married to that and take that forward.
Positive progress.
Someone that will continue to develop, respect existing partnerships that you have, and will continue to look and search for news, others.
You know, we were kind of, we were pretty innovative in our, in beginning our one-to-one technology. Our kids, we've had Chromebook one-to-ones for a long time, much longer than a lot of districts.
Okay.
So I think we're, when it comes to that, I think we're ahead of the game, you know, we're, we're debt-free. We have zero bond indebtedness. And so, but it's time that we take our buildings and our capital infrastructure to another level. So somehow say that, where we have cash in the bank, but we need, we're gonna have to get somebody that knows how to do that. We have needs, we have capital needs, not anything for us.
Okay. What else?
And we've kept, I don't know how to go about salary, man, we've worked really hard at pulling in all the salaries from the region to make sure our superintendent is right there at the top of that. So Alba is a crown jewel of Northwest Oklahoma.
Okay.
It is, and we wanna make sure we act like that. We, we have room for, we, we really have room for academic growth. So someone that's strong in academia and curriculum, structures, curriculum instruction, we, we need some help there.
Okay.
So I don't really talk about your balls around, we've got some room to grow academically.
Good communication, good team building. You know, the old rah-rah coach that comes in, everybody jumps on and says, well, I don't know what it's gonna take, but we're gonna get it done, and that's, I mean, that's, we have a lot of, and we've had that, we just have to continue that, not, it's like, well, that doesn't affect me, so I don't care.
Right.
It does affect you, it affects all of us, everything affects all of us.
We transfer, we have transportation issues too, so.
In regard to bus fleets. And aging?
Aging.
Okay.
We're gonna go ahead and take care of part of that before we start our leases, bonding.
It is a lot of.
We're gonna do that through Master Lease.
Okay.
So we're not gonna bond that out.
Right.
Still be indebtedness.
Okay.
That we haven't had at this point. The Master Lease program was created by the legislature a few years ago, it's where you don't have to go and get a bond, you can just actually go, and just like we did with your value vehicle. And it's called Master Lease, it's, I think it's since, it's two thousand and two that the regional university system of Oklahoma has passed a geo-bond. It's all done through Master Lease now.
Okay.
So it's different, and we've not used the Master Lease program to my knowledge, because we haven't needed to, we've had reserves. So there's two ways to fund those issues.
Okay.
But our ratios are really small, and I don't know whether you can quote those ratios, Stephanie, that, you know, how much money you bring in, what's, it's called, what's admiral? Versus debt, there's a ratio that the bond people use. Ours just looks almost unbelievable, because we don't, we don't have any debt to go along with that admiral.
Right.
Ratio, so, I mean, we should look like we're.
You're in good shape.
Yes.
Kind of, which we are.
That's good.
We are, we, I mean.
I like that.
And who, who can't get better, we all can get better.
That's much more enjoyable than the, than the other.
Sure.
Than the other option.
Get it out of a hole.
And unfortunately, there are districts that that's, you know, what that person walks into, so I think you all are in good shape.
Sure.
Getting better from the level we're at right now is a lot easier than getting better from the hole.
Yeah, it's just the security of that, and knowing you've got some wiggle room, yeah, that's really great. So any, anything else that you all want to share with me? What I will do from here, like I said, it'll probably be kind of later, later this week, but I'll get you that list. I'll pull our notes together, and I'll get that fed back to you in a type of summary, so you can have an idea of the things that we talked about here. I will send you the, along with the task list, and kind of your hit list of things, there's, it's gonna be an Excel spreadsheet, you're gonna have a, a task with someone, and the next tab is gonna be your timeline. And I'll get that information filled in, and it's fillable, so you and I can just talk and go back and forth on that, and then I will also send some dates for possible fellow groups. Okay.
And you can then share those with all of us, have, I finally got my email.
You got your school email, I'm going. Okay. Everybody else okay? School emails, good.
You guys see your emails, our schools, okay.
And I will, and I will send you, that's one of the things I'll send you, is like an updated contact list. Perfect. And so if you want everything going through your, through your out-of list, like I think I have your personal. Yeah. So yes, put the ones you want the school business to be on, and I'll just make sure that that's what we do that. Okay. And I will, just so that you all know, at the, at the front end, there's gonna be a lot of communication right here, and just kind of getting some things finalized. But then, when I talk to everyone, I will say, Alba board members, that you will all be blind copied. So as much information as we can put out there, so all of you have that information, I'll just do updates pretty much every seven to ten days, so you all have an idea of kind of where we are with things.
Sure.
And then, of course, if you have any questions, right away, you know, let me know, the, the, the thing that I would just ask you not to wait on is when I send you the information to create your account, to look at the applications, get that done. Write your password down somewhere, save that link, right? And so that you can just be looking at that periodically throughout the time that we go through that.
Now, their application, which I thought was helpful on some of the other sessions I've been on, there's various things that were required, obviously, a resume, or whatever, data, whatever they call it. Do they, do we ask for a cover letter?
A cover letter will be included, I do wanna ask, I do like to include, I call them application statements.
Yeah.
Where the applicant responds to an evidence-based question, basically. So it would be demonstrate you have experience with capital improvement planning. And we would want that example of what that looked like with the details, you know. Because, again, everyone can look good on paper, and I think the application statement helps, number one, kind of check their, their grammar and their writing skills, which is really important. And, you know, are they spouting theory out of a textbook from their latest graduate class? Or are they really doing the work, you know, have they really done the work?
We sat in a meeting with OSBA, and that's almost scary.
Yeah.
They have had them present to us, and this is something we decide as we get to the interview process, of what our first hundred days would look like.
Yes, and that's usually what we do for that second review.
So that part doesn't need to be in the first part, just.
No, well, I really feel like we'll use the, so the application process itself is a good screening tool, and then you add that to the application statements, and that kind of helps filter that a little further. We really see that first interview as being another screener, in a way.
What do the letters of recommendation, do they come with the first one, like, do they have references only?
So they will, you're gonna see a variety of things, so the application system has an automated reference survey. And so if that reference survey goes out to whomever they put, and then that response comes back into the system. So what you may see, and I'll just let you know this, is the way the system works, it's in two parts, there's a profile part of the system, and that's kind of like all their general information. Right, their resume, you know, their transcripts, you know, where they've worked, what their work experience is. And when they apply to Alba, that's where your application statements are. And so that profile is gonna come over to this, your application, and then they'll have your pieces. There's a chance, in that profile, that they've already sent that out, they might have a reference from twenty twenty-one, right, or twenty twenty-two. Because the system doesn't ask them to redo that, I think, every three years. So don't be surprised if you see that, and otherwise, there'll be new ones up there. But yes, so they will have the reference surveys there, some of them will upload actual reference letters that have been written on their behalf. Again, I think you all can make that decision if you want to call call references, once we have it narrowed down to that first round, or if you wanna do it between the first round and the second round, when you have a fewer, smaller group.
Now, we don't wanna assign that between us, when we get those.
Right.
When we narrow it down, we won't, we won't wanna go rogue and just call, be calling people all over, we don't wanna say, okay, I'll say, shame them, or say, well, I have good contact with that, and that, you know, you recall about that. We don't wanna be very organized.
And we'll recall, exactly, and that's part of, kind of all of these things, it's kind of like checklist of the things we'll do at the application review meeting. So we'll just, we'll kind of just attack things in pieces, it's an elephant, so we'll just attack it a little bit as we go around.
There's a difference between a closed search and an open search. And these people are applying, because this is a closed search to start with. And it won't be an open search until we get down, and we will not print, we will not say who our finalists are, we will not say who we're interviewing, we won't say who the top three are. We won't announce any of those things until we announce the person we're getting ready to hire.
Yes.
So that really makes people very comfortable in applying for our position, because it doesn't get out. So that really makes people very comfortable in applying for our position, because it doesn't get out or get back to their permanent employer.
True.
That they're applying for this position. So it is closed, and when I mean closed, I mean closed, until, that's why we're very, very careful.
Yes, and you must be, and I, I, this is my 12th year, 130th search, maybe. And, um, it's, it's not good when the, when a board leaks an applicant's name. Um, the absolute worst-case scenario is a person was offered the position, he went to the coffee shop in his community the next day and was asked about why he was leaving. And, um, they ended up with their third candidate, right? Just the board just, they just couldn't keep quiet about it. And it, it matters, um, it really matters. Sitting superintendents especially, because they understand that these are, this is a personnel issue, right? It's executive session, it's personnel. And so that, the philosophy is, golly, they can't handle, they can't handle a personnel issue, which is me, and keep it quiet in executive session. I don't know that I could trust them to keep anything in executive session quiet. And they really, really use that as a, as a litmus test, I, I will say. So I appreciate you saying that and supporting that. Um, that makes my job a lot easier when I can tell them, we've had that conversation, I trust them, you know, the best I can trust. We can't control if the applicants put their name out there, and sometimes they do. More likely that'll happen with an assistant superintendent or a principal, you know, and there's nothing we can really do to control that.
Do people, Stephanie, do people sometimes have more on the interview committee besides just the board members?
Not, not so much because of the confidentiality.
I didn't think so, but I wanna make sure we were.
Say that, agree with that.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you all are bound by your oath of office where a community member is not, and we can have them sign confidentiality agreements, but it's, it's difficult to make it binding. Um, what we prefer is if, that's kind of where the focus groups definitely come in, is that if you have a small group of folks that feel very, very strongly that you would like to really hear their voices, then let's pull them in as a small group, um, and have some of those conversations with them. And then again, you all take that into consideration when you're reviewing the applications. So you can, you can let me know if that, if that occurs, so. Great conversation. You all have any other questions? I appreciate it so much. It's gonna be a great, it'll just, it'll be a great process and, um, I'm very, very thankful. Please let Dr. Argo know, he knows me well enough, to say thank you for letting you know early. I cannot tell you, I know it's, and it's, it's hard and it's heartbreaking for everyone, um, but to know early for you all, it puts you in such a better position, um, to really be able to find some, a good, some good quality candidates that are out there. And this is, this is a great time of year to get this started, so.
So we've agreed on.
No, I was, and I was gonna say to board members, it helps to have the dates, at least, you know, if something comes up, I go, well, I'm going the 12th. I, no, I can't off the 17th, it doesn't matter what it is.
Yes, yes.
And it, that just helps, so thank you. But I wanted to reiterate, if you come across something, I mean, let Jane know. I, I, I think Shane and I are probably more flexible than you guys, so I mean, as far, if you need to bump it, as long as I know ahead of time, I, you know, let my crew know, so.
Okay.
So we've agreed on the communication package.
Yes.
To add to our original fee, we've agreed on four focus groups to be held all on the same day and to be facilitated by the OSSBA. If you can't do them all, it's, it would help to do them all. The rest of it is just what it is. When we bring them in, we pay to have her, she will facilitate that day as well. When they come in, she'll bring them in and take them out and they'll just be here. She will also, let's pay for all the travel expenses in.
Yep.
They come from in-state or out-state or they have to stay. Um, so all of that, we'll wait to see if we wanna do any personality testing. We'll see how we feel. We get down to one or two, we may decide we wanna do that, we may not. And so, um, you just don't know till you get there. But when you're, when you're doing national searches, you know, you just have to have everyone like to help you, and these won't be as national, they'll be more regional, I'm sure.
They will, but actually, I'm the former, um, chair of the National Association of Superintendent Searchers and so my peers in all of our other states will also receive.
Sure.
The, um, opening.
That's awesome. And she does, she has some really good contacts with Kansas, the people in Kansas that do this job. So she's gonna help us there, you know, we may have out of the Navy, so we don't, they don't wanna move home and that's always a real good fit for us, bringing an extra, special, you know.
Yes.
Yes, and so, um, Terry, have we forgotten anything?
Hi, you guys are great.
Okay. We, we can't do it without her.
I know, we're gonna be friends, we already are, but we're gonna be better.
So she'll help, she'll be our greatest resource of mostly being called.
Perfect. I can handle that part.
She's an.
You guys have the tough job.
The individual.
Well, I'll tell you, she's, she especially will be appreciative of you using OSSBA, because she will not have any questions.
Yeah, we.
Curious, you know, no little curious cats.
Yeah.
And if you do, you can say, I really don't know, Miss Stephanie.
I know that.
Stephanie.
So our district's worthy of the best.
There we are.
Process that we can afford, and I think we can afford this one, so.
Great.
Uh, we're thrilled and our kids deserve.
I'm excited.
Priority.
I'm excited, it'll be great.
I know you are, you'll do a great job, I feel. At the end of the day, we're not, don't.
You're, you're in good hands, I promise. Just trust the process, it'll, it'll work itself out. I'm gonna say goodbye, let you all close, I'll hit the restroom and then I'm gonna.
Okay, be safe.
Head south and.
Watch animals.